Okay, now.
Yes.
Okay, on this, Ross is there.
Oh, great. Well, Ross is there. Hi, Ross. I see Anna Marie.
Anna Marie's there as well.
You know who's going to be here?
He said he was.
Does he remember that we're meeting in person?
Well, I've communicated with him. Yes, in fact, he was going to be here in town, and that's why he knew he was going to be able to make it. You have some water coming by the way.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so we have a forum. Our meeting is on its way, so I'm going to ask that we call at 6:00 p.m., at least on my clock. I do the roll call job, Bob, please.
Yes, President Palmer.
Here.
Vice President Farah. Director Army. Is absent at this point. Director O'Neill.
Yes, I'm not on mute.
And Director Ross.
Here.
All right, we have a forum. We all please stand up.
The flag right there.
Or the big one.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey. Before we move into director comment, I first wanted to welcome you all here and tell you how exciting we are to be back. Since January 2020, great to see our neighbors in person. And particularly at this time in the lifecycle of the of the district, it's great to have you all here. So let's move into director comments. I'll start.
I don't have any comments other than just to report to the president and to the public. I have a prior engagement license canceled, so I will be leaving at 7:00 p.m. if we're not.
Okay, thank you. Director.
I have no comments.
The only one I have is that General Manager Pearl and I, this last week or the week before, did a presentation to Irwin, which is a regional water management agency.
I think that was the week before.
Okay, but we they are a regional agency that provides coordinated groundwater management, and they also have potential grant funding that we may be eligible for, so we are. Okay, so then we'll move into public comment. And this is because it's a special meeting, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong. Members of the public can speak on the agenda item that's before us tonight.
Yes.
Right? So that's the only thing we're taking public testimony on site and asking that you keep your comments to three minutes just to keeping the meeting to a reasonable time. So Bob, how do you want to do that? Because we want to take public comment after the presentation rather than now, since it's the only thing we're taking.
You know, my suggestion would be that, first of all, a couple of comments. The meeting is being recorded in a couple of different ways. It's being recorded on Zoom, and I also have a little recorder going here as well. What's important is that when you address the board, please state your name. And if you don't mind, if you could speak as loud as you possibly can, that would be helpful, at least so to be sure that our recording picks up. With that, Madam Chair, I would suggest you, it's really up to you. You could, since it's on the agenda, if you want to entertain comments about matters regarding that are on the agenda, people can either make them now or wait until the presentations are done.
I'm going to just recommend that we do it after the presentation, because I think the presentation will help you answer questions. And so in a minute, I'm going to turn it over to Bob to do that presentation, but I just wanted to also recognize we have our legal counsel, Ross Trindell, on Zoom. He's there in the upper left-hand corner, and one member of the public. Via Zoom. And before Bob jumps into item six, I just, again, wanted to take a moment since acknowledge and celebrate a little bit, you know, since we formed this district as residents in 2018. I mean, we've worked diligently to get to this point, and now with this state water revolving fund action grant, $150,000 state funds, that's what's going to allow, is finally allowing it to move forward with actual design of a solution. So while we're kind of in the middle of all this, and there's a lot, you know, a lot going on, I think as a community, we've come a long way since that January 2018, when we decided that taking control, local control of the solution for our community was what we wanted to do, and we're moving forward with that. So with that, Bob, I'll turn it over to you to talk about six review notification from the state on the grant funding and discussion of preliminary design.
Madam President, before I actually begin with the staff report, I just want to let you know I did receive a phone text message from Director Army, and unfortunately, he's feeling ill this evening and won't be joining us. With that, this is really a time for celebration, I think, in many respects. Last spring, the district applied for the state's water recycling fund grant to pay for the preliminary design of the wastewater treatment project. The district has received notification that the state will provide matching funds up to $150,000 to cover those costs. What that means is that the district will be putting in an additional $150,000 toward that effort. So there is $300,000 available to handle these costs. And so we learned just late last week, we were notified by the state that we actually have an eligible date by which we can begin incurring costs. It takes the state a while, as we all know, they're a bit of a bureaucracy, so it takes them a while to get through all the hoops, but we're at that point at this time. So the, what we're looking for the board are, I'm looking for the board to do, is actually give Stan Tech the selected engineer the nod to go ahead. Issue their notice to proceed so that they can get on down the road with the preliminary design of the project. Preliminary design of the project is very important because it'll include an outline, a design, an outline of where the project is going to be located, both in terms of the collection, the collection lines, as well as eventually making recommendations about the treatment plant, the package plant that we hope to bring to town. And in line with that, in terms of timing, we expect that Stan Tech will be making periodic reports to us as they go along. But we expect that they will have their basis of design, which is the first level, threshold level, back to the board for review in December. The goal is to be in place, have sufficient information about the design of the plant and the costs that we can begin to put together the assessment vote. All of that would have to come back to you. It's another reason that the grant is so important is because it helps us to hold down those overall costs. But right now, the board has indicated that their desire is to complete the assessment process by the summer of 2022. So this preliminary design is very important. On September 15th, the board reviewed a proposal, and we, they, on September 15th, they basically, the board indicated that they were designating Stan Tech as the engineer for the preliminary design. The cost for that work alone is $266,750. Going back a bit, in August, the board identified two possible sites to be initially considered by Stan Tech in this preliminary design process. And one of the distinctions to be made is that a site has not been selected. Eventually, we've got to reach a point where the design will incorporate and make recommendations about where the plant should go. But back in August, the board did initially identify a couple of sites. And, and since that time, they conducted a public hearing or a public meeting on the 15th of September to entertain comments. Well, there were a whole lot of comments that came out of that particular meeting, and I'm sure that the board will be able to speak to that better than me, but I can tell you that they're taking everybody's concerns and thoughts in mind. For that reason, what they, what I am recommending that they authorize Stan Tech to do is more or less to take a look at the site selection again from a, a a service delivery point of view, from a project and technical point of view, and identify sites that would best serve the community and the project itself. So we're kind of getting back to that point. Now, to use the, to get them started with that, Stan Tech will be using the UPC report, Urban Planning Consultants, who came up with a list of 17 sites. And that's what led us to the initial identification of the two. But again, no site selection has been made at this point, but it is extremely important that we move the process along. So that concludes, and Stan Tech is available to do this work for an additional $10,000 that roll into those design costs. So essentially, that concludes my opening remarks. I'm available. We also have the district's engineer, Doug Pike, is here, in case the board members have any questions about us. And then I would suggest that after you've had an opportunity to ask us questions, that we proceed to hear from the public.
Okay, that sounds good. I also want to recognize Autumn Blazer, Blazer from Stan Tech. So thank you for that, Bob. Okay, so we've had his report. Director Farah, and we'll just go around for questions.
Thank you, Madam President. Bob, we've received confirmation from the state that we're starting incurring costs as of September 30th.
Yes.
You know, as I've mentioned in past board meetings, you know, I'm nervous about getting ahead of absolutely having the grant. When do you expect that we would have the final grant approval at the board?
It's probably going to come, I would doubt we'd have it by 10:13, which is only a week away. The documents still had to be forwarded to us. I would say it would come during the month of October, certainly. And, you know, if the board desired, in terms of authorizing the signature on the agreement, we certainly could have another meeting at that date, but I do think it's important from a timeframe to get Stan Tech started as quickly as we can.
Okay, and then a follow-up to that is that so being that we expect this grant in a short period of time, then while we are at risk, because nothing's done until it's done.
That's true.
We would be at the front end of the design, so we would technically be liable for, I guess, a relatively smaller part of the Stan Tech. I mean, when we sign the contract with Stan Tech, we're obliged to pay them, which obviously is the case. But just from the risk perspective, as I mentioned, I, I'm nervous about that, but I also understand the timeline and the relative risk is something that is somewhat in control.
Yes.
Interpretation. Study, as it's called, for the regional Stan Tech.
Right.
I'm under the impression that we're asking Stan Tech not to provide a separate report, but to integrate the designs.
Yes, that's true.
With the
Basic of Design. Right, but it will incorporate their recommendations regarding, as a part of that basic basis of design.
And I just want to, it's my interpretation also, that we'll not only bring in the engineering, the engineering record, but also bring in the geos.
Yes, very definitely.
From a geological standpoint, and also integrated with the environmental, EIR elements. Were we defined in the scope?
Our intent is GSI will pay in as well, yes.
And
and that's fine. I don't, I didn't know if you had it.
We, Technical Committee has recommended UPC. We will need to bring that back for further board discussion. But I, I want to let you know that in fact, GSI will be making a report because at your next meeting on the 13th.
For the benefit of the public, can you define and tell people?
Groundwater solutions. And what they do is they are going to actually, and Brian can probably answer this better than me, but they're going to look at what's underneath the ground. And what they're going to do is, is they're going to be working on how injection, the feasibility of injection, and how that might work. And so it's, it's a major part. It's a feasibility study that will run concurrently with Stan Tech. So that by the time that we get to the completion of the engineering's preliminary design stage, we're going to know not only how and where, hopefully, but how it's going to work, so to speak, in terms of where those injection wells have to go, and what it will do to the, the groundwater in terms of hopefully improving the quality of the groundwater. So it's a major piece of work. And we'll be back, and I'll be back in front of you at our next meeting, which is October 13th, to authorize your pursuing GSI.
Still, it makes my understanding that engineering, hydrological, environmental results, preliminary results, will be really deciding economic feasibility for the site selection.
Right.
Site selection, as we were going to say, the board had recommended going after the first and second sites, was clearly to get the engineering mission.
Right.
So when we started this process, there was a focus on, I guess we call it business zone. And then we decided we're creating managers to look at the entire district. My question is, is the study going to provide answers for both the district and the business zone? Or did we switch just to the district?
Well, I will answer, then I'll ask Autumn to, it's been done so that you'll have the district-wide costs and the district approach, but it is one that if economics end up requiring it, and we don't actually know what those estimates are, it, it could then, in fact, be phased.
Are we going to have a couple of scenarios to look at when we're done?
Correct, yes. Through the basis of design, yeah. Then I have a couple so just to be clear, going back to GSI and the geotechnical, clearly, that's a critical component of deciding where we can, or we should or shouldn't place a facility. I don't know whether the injection wells are associated with the plant or they are separate, so that's something that your further technical and engineering analysis will reveal in conjunction with the geotechnical, is that correct? Correct. Okay, and then piggybacking on Director Ross. Just to address all districts, so clear, we are doing a design for the, for all districts, but we'll be able to offset some totals or break it out. You have a business, downtown business core zone, we already defined the zone. So we, so, so in other words, we'll be able to have a subtotal for each of those zones. And in the cost and engineering, you know, engineering, how you do a system for each of those zones, and what total would be for an all district. So when you bring us the basis of, I don't know if I actually look at the area. Bring us that basis of design, we'll be able to see those, offset totals, if you will, or subcomponents for the entire district.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The, the commercials zone kind of naturally ends up being separate, just because that's how you have to evaluate it from a technical standpoint. So it's one that can be grown out fairly easily.
Okay, so thank you for that. And then two more questions. The second is, just in looking at your scope, it says Stan Tech will incorporate our findings in the basis of design. It doesn't say recommendation. I want to be clear that we're getting not just findings, but recommendations from a technical standpoint, after you put the engineering, geotechnical, whatever environmental's done, that you're running it through that funnel, if you will, or that matrix, and providing recommendations. Because to me, that's, that's, that's the value we're getting for adding $10,000 to the project.
Right, so our, we will work with the criteria from a technical standpoint, and that will lead to a ranking, similar, but from technical basis.
Right.
And from a perspective of looking at what's needed to be on the site, so we'll have a lot more information to be able to put that toward the recommendations of sites.
Okay, and again, that's, that's very helpful. Again, I just want to be clear, because it doesn't say that in the proposal, it says findings, but there's a difference between findings and recommendations. Yeah, okay. And then, okay, actually, I think, I think that's it from my unless there's any other questions from the board, I think we'll go ahead and open the public hearing or public comment period. So what I want to do is, I think, how many, can people raise their hand? Let me know who wants to speak. Kelly wants to speak.
Cody.
Cody.
He's my grandson.
Oh, Cody, okay. Cody, Mark, Julie. Okay.
And Madam President, before you do, I just wanted to let you know you did receive a letter from the Rohr family, and you did receive an email that was distributed from Anne Marie Gott.
Right, right. Thank you for that. So I know, Anne Marie, are you also intending to speak, or are you just listening?
Yes, I do intend to speak.
Okay, why don't, why don't we start with you, if we could, and let's keep it to three minutes if we can. Please.
Great, okay. Board members, my mother Patricia Ann Gott owns three of the lots, number two, three, and four. The first being the alternate site that you discussed on September 15th. Can you hear me? Is this why you're moving?
Yeah, we're moving it around to try and.
Okay, try that. Board members.
It's better.
Okay. Board members, my mother Patricia Ann Gott owns three of the parcels that you reviewed on September 15th. The first one was the alternate site, followed by a site number three and site number four. She does not intend to sell any of these parcels for this use. And we are asking that you remove these parcels from your consideration at your next board meeting. Additionally, the scoring on the, the, the documentation that you received last month was incorrect, because she has no intention of actually agreeing to sell this property. You will have to take it through eminent domain. Regarding some of the documentation that I've seen with your past, or past minutes, I want to just bring up the desktop study, which basically did not allow anyone to actually be on the ground in Los Salibos to see what the build-out is for many of our, our lots in the C2, as well as south of the C2 area. It seems that that was a faulty analysis, and you need to start from scratch. And it, you absolutely should have someone on-site looking at the lots and looking at the area. Regarding the C2 zone, if that is the area that you are intending to clean up, that is the area where you should actually be placing this particular treatment facility, rather than putting it in a residential area like the area that my mom's property is in. Additionally, when you are, when the, the study was done, it seemed that there were some lots that were completely missed that had very little development and a ton of open space that was more than, more than adequate to actually house this facility that were completely disregarded. That goes back to my, you know, original, you know, discussion item here. The actual study, a desktop study, was very faulty. Finally, when you had your December meeting last year, the agenda packet specifically talks about the Phase One study, and the project description for the scope of work included surface ponds. So I have a question for you. If these surface ponds are actually going to be If these surface ponds are actually going to be built now or in the future. How is that going to affect residents that are living adjacent to that particular lot? If you decided already that you are not going to have surface ponds, then you need to have that removed from the scope of work. If you are going to have surface ponds, then you need to actually accommodate the residents. And you need to cite this particular treatment, treatment facility appropriately. Which means that it has to be further away from residential uses. And it needs to be in an area that is more secluded because you cannot control the odor 24/7. There are always problems with surface ponds. Lastly, I want to remind you that SB 10 and SB 9 have just been passed by the governor. The load capacity that you have right now for what you think you're going to build for the wastewater treatment may be completely off. Because SB 9 allows any lot, especially a lot with sewer access, to have four residential units on it. It also allows the county to change its general plan and to allow for spot zoning, you know, of course, at any time for 10 units or more with SB 10. So the number of residential units that you actually think you have in Los Olivos could easily quadruple overnight. Especially for how desirable the area is. And you may not actually have a lot that is sufficient for not just the commercial area, but the residential outside, residential areas directly outside and for the whole town. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. And I hope you take my comments to heart.
Thank you, Anna Marie, I appreciate it. Okay, then we'll move to Carrie. And if you can state your name and your address for the record, just so we have it.
Please. Carrie Kendall, 2484 Ruppart, just outside the district, almost. So as a, as a real estate broker and a resident of this community, I have a look to turn over to SB 10. And I feel that I think the sewer septic issues will curtail that from happening. So in terms of sizing this facility, I will re-keep that into consideration. I, for one, don't want to see this community changed, and I think that might be a little tool we have.
Thanks, Carrie.
Ellen?
Um, I wanted to just suggest that we start planning to do the residential area for the business district because the business district has support bodies. Residential only has their own bodies and they're the ones that need to be addressed. And so if we could do the residential area first, we're going to have less people fall out because they have to put a DanTex or some other system in, and then they wouldn't be participating in the overall project.
Thank you.
Cody, Cody Siler. I'm here with my grandmother, she lives off Olivestreet. I did have a question regarding, I believe you referred to as an injection site or well. What, what's the purpose of it?
That would be to dispose of the treated effluent from the waste coming out of the treated.
So they're injected into the soil? So on a couple of these sites, there's swales that are located there. How does that impact the desirability of those lots?
I'm not a hydrogeologist, I don't think they're here.
Well, so that would be GSI who we were talking about there, the geotechnical. And just to be clear, on the reinjection, that's a beneficial leak from the water board's protective, that's beneficial reuse of the treated water, right? We're recharging the groundwater. So even though we're injecting a fluid, which sounds, doesn't sound great, the redoing it, you know, treating it to what they call Title 22 standards, then reinjecting it back into the groundwater is actually a benefit.
Okay.
So I would, I would think, not to get ahead of Autumn, not to comment during public comment, but that would be addressed during this preliminary with GSI.
And then one other clarification, so when you're talking about the assessment that the engineer potentially do. We're talking about this system's efficiency rather than its communal impact? Or does that become a factor in determining the adequate site?
So that's a good question that you put into the record. And I mean, there's a number of factors, the community impact is certainly one of them.
Okay.
Right, is we're looking at the trade offs and that'll be addressed in their analysis. And when they come back to recommendations, we'll have, you know, pluses and minuses and trade offs for the various phases and recommendations.
Okay, I think that's all.
Okay, thanks. Mark, I think we're done.
Just thank you guys again for serving us. I haven't been involved since the formation, but all these flashbacks, all these community meetings in this room. It was led up to the formation of CSD, haunting to also do memories. But I just, you know, want to, want to bring up the fact that I just encourage this kind of public outreach, this type of interaction. I think it's important for our community during COVID, you know, you guys had a lot of Zoom meetings. And I think getting residents and property owners back in the room is really productive, especially at this point, given this is the, how the road needs to ruin or whatever you say. So I'm just a couple of points. I would encourage on a study, maybe you've already done this, but public input on a design of a study. Make sure we don't have another engineering, whether it's like study, you know, I kind of know it's done unturned, unturned on auctions. In property owner, supportive site is very important. I know this is God here, and the family were very distressed by the, by their site being selected. And I know it's already affected the sale of a lot next door. But I know I have people, neighbors that are interested by, are concerned that there's going to be always lots complaining over there. So I think we have to keep in mind that, just the realities for everybody who lives here of citing. But ultimately, we are going to have a solution somewhere. You know, whether it's this district or another district coming in and doing it. There is a regulatory problem you guys have to address. And just feel good that we've got a board of local, mostly those residents, which it very easily could have been when we were driving up to San Barbara for this meeting or San Luis Obispo or the San Yen, it's all been, we're here, people who live here who are very capable and talented. So I just say, just keep the community process going and don't let decisions get ahead of the community. Because you're going to give the community, just like we got 70 something percent of the community to vote yes on the district. You're going to need that same support to be successful. And then I would just encourage also to look at, you know, advanced on sites for some of the larger parcels. We're running all these pipes, maybe way too expensive. Carrie's point about some of these state laws where this would be tremendously growth inducing, you have to keep that in mind too because nobody wants to blow this town up, that's horribly sad. And also, you know, make sure we're looking at some step systems for more cost effective collection from certain parcels versus the big pipes. So kind of, I'd say at this point, no stone unturned, but put all of our minds together and make sure that the study you get is one that you can act on and use with this work. And then one is design build an option at some point too versus all the engineering.
Thanks, Mark. Julie.
Also just want to echo, thanks to the board for all the hard work. It's all been right out firsthand, amount of personal climate that you're all investing in trying to resolve this and a lot of technical information. We got also get gradually to come on the ground. And that's like, I mean, you know, I spent the day up in Sacramento, I forget how much money we could get. Pass off to you guys for making that happen. I just wanted to add that as far as the decision about citing, I think it's really important to make that decision based on data. And it sounds like this segment being put together is going to provide a lot of that information and recommendations. So and just to let the engineers finish the work before going down the path without deciding on a site. As Mark mentioned, it is going to be, you know, it's, I don't want to be impacting residential properties in any fashion. Well, I just wanted to add, I had visited a close scene a night or four, spent the better part of the day out there. And I think that it's really, for those who've not seen what this pack of plant looks like, it's just, it's a rather small building. And it, which can be easily added on to, but it's not smelly, it's not messy, it doesn't look like a big ugly sewer treatment plant. We'd always talk about being like a little barn over it and making it look like it's part of the community. I remember we were standing up there having a conversation at this abnormal level. And the top was open and it was doing its whole thing. And as I said, it's fairly quiet and while we've been out, I drank the water that came out, it was really calming. So then back to the idea about recharge, using it to recharge the groundwater, that's a big plus for us with this system. Well, can't speak yet.
Thanks, Julie. Anybody else? Okay, we will close public comment. Bring it back to the board. I do, you know, just, Bob, if I could ask you and maybe Ross, in the SB nine and 10, right? That's, that's on our radar. I don't know if you can speak to her, that'll be the subsequent meeting, what we're doing. I guess just acknowledge that it's on our radar and we're looking to see what, you know, how other, what jurisdictions they're doing in terms of study and accommodation and how we factor that into our goal process.
I think that's about the direction we'll have to go. It, it, and so everybody knows, and maybe Ross can amplify this. But the new state law does create some flexibility in terms of residential development. And it's primarily geared to secondary dwelling units. And there's a lot, the fewer permit controls placed on those. It's kind of difficult from my perspective to determine how much of an impact it's going to make on Los Olivos. Largely because it's a small, very, very small community, so.
I just wanted to acknowledge that it's on our radar.
Yes.
Yes, not.
Yeah, well, I was going to bring that up, I have two points I wanted to bring up. When I thought at a future meeting, maybe our district council, Mr. Kendall could come back and report. My understanding is SB 10 aside, can't approve housing units without public services from here to serve those. So if ID1 doesn't give a cannon, we'll serve if they need a separate meter. Or if we can't give a cannon, we'll serve. My understanding is, is that there is some type of control over that. Because I think that the, I think we made the statement that we designed a system for the town and they could easily be overwhelmed by, by that, that type of development. And I, my understanding is I don't think that mechanism is in place, but if that's not correct, we need to know that. And so I just asked that maybe we hear from that in a future, future attending. And then my last comment, just based on the public just, Madam President, it's a, I understand the question of the residential that was serving that as well. You know, the board has been talking about that. And, you know, one of the benefits of designing the entire system right up front, which this board opted to do at a cost increase, is it allows us to look at the flexibility of how much of the downtown or how much additional residential or the whole thing. Because the plans would be basically accommodated to do that. For me, the question will become, come down to is what grant funding is available to help offset that and at what time? So the timing of that is going to be. But we've already talked about in, I think, some of the public workshops, gosh, was that two summers ago? That there are residential areas adjacent to the downtown core that could very easily, with the existing collection system for the downtown, or maybe some minor addition of collector pipes could be included in if there were a Phase One. But I just wanted to say that I think all of that is on the table. And if we can do the whole town with a grant on, on the gate, then that's something that I think we'd all be interested in.
Thanks, Tom. I guess, so we'll bring it back for any other questions or comments.
The board and the initial technicals. Integrating, I guess, the limitation of expanding on the sewage system for the community. That's one of our bases. We made a lot of consideration and going, maybe we want to change this, we want to add things. Now with the AB 10 in place, I'm glad that we did. Not to get into the technical aspects or anything that, but the treatment system selected will have a defined capacity. That capacity will be limited to, see how it's going. Capacity is limited to what we have now and the loading study that's in place. How it's increased would probably be, if it was increased because five people wanted to put a development on it or have it replaced, whatever it's going to be. Will be limited economically because they'll potentially have to put in another sewage treatment. And there is an economic restriction on growth built in this plant. But what we want to do, if we want to continue looking at this as, because that was the intent of what we started this whole thing, request. Limit the expansion of what, what term, what I can say. Second part is Cody, he's a guy on the page. Just the example of having these other sites with swales is one of the reasons why we're doing these abilities or reasonable design. From an engineering point of view, it's also the height of the lock. Perfect, swale, hey. We want to put this, it also falls on the, yes.
Thanks. Okay, I guess the only thing, first of all, thank you all for being here. And it is such a critical point in the process where it's great that we can all gather in person again instead of being on Zoom. So I appreciate that. So with that, bring it back, we have a staff recommendation that the board authorized, authorized. Issue into the notice to proceed to StanTech for the preliminary design project. Incorporating a site review as outlined to be, I'll say the StanTech amendment. How are you, what are you referring that to, expand in scope?
Yes, it, it's an additional task. It's referred to, it's task three, isn't it?
One fourteen, those fifteen, and then four additional scope.
You made, that would be something that maybe Ross wants to weigh in on.
Yeah, thank you for asking the question. Did you hear that, Ross?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Director O'Neill's question completely.
Ross, are we, are we actually voting on two concepts here? One is basically the notice to proceed to StanTech. And then the second one would be the extension of their scope. Or can we do that under one single vote?
Well, they're, they're tied together because the, the board action under consideration is to proceed with these changes in what they're going to be doing to include incorporating the site review. So it's, it's really one in the same, but it is consistent with the current contract that the district has. And consistent with the power of issuing these task orders. So I, I don't think it needs to be broken out. That being said, if the, if the board would feel more comfortable breaking it out, there's certainly nothing against that either.
Yes, thank you, Ross. Yes.
So I'm prepared to make a motion. I'm probably one of the most concerned about getting ahead financially, you all know that. But I think in this case, I feel comfortable with the fact that our general manager got notification from the state that we can start capturing our costs and that this would return before StanTech would build up too much of a, of a billing that we wouldn't be able to pay. And so while I still have that reservation, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve item six and direct staff to issue a notice to proceed to StanTech, which includes the additional element for projects. I'll second that motion.
Okay, there is a first and second, any further discussion? I do want to make one comment, and that is just to clarify that the additional scope for StanTech is to take the UPC sighting study as it stands without any change. Because we're going to look at that from a technical, environmental and geo, geological standpoint before we, we, you know, we got a We, you know, we got ahead of ourselves, I think, before I'm looking at siding, let's let STAN TECH do their job and come back with recommendations. And I also do want to note that it, this scope doesn't preclude STAN TECH from studying additional little sites that are not on the. We're opening it up for their review and recommendations.
Are we ready for a roll call? President Palmer. Vice President Farim. Director Army is absent. Director O'Neill. And then Director Ross.
Aye.
So the motion passes four ayes and one absent.
Thanks, all. Board members, moving on to seventh call for agenda items.
Well, Madam President, I kind of mentioned that earlier. I, I would appreciate if Mr. Kendall could provide us some type of information. Maybe working with general manager on what we can. Means, I mean, we're at the right time to know this. We're, we're about to undertake our design.
Right.
And we need to have this information on what, what's in front of us. So whether that's obviously not going to be next week, I don't think. But as soon thereafter, if we could have that.
Well, and I think certainly before we get STAN TECH gets too far into the basis of design or we know how they're. Anyone else?
I'd like to just bring up the idea of a site visit to like close Sina type system. I'd like to get that, we talked about it. Extremely valuable for us to all have a right perspective. Let's not lose track of that.
Are you committed to take a drink? We all go there?
I'm fine.
Well, to that, to that point, if I could, I know on conference, I, I mean, that is something Bob and I talked about, we talked about trying to get it done this month. I actually went up to a close to a plant a couple of weeks ago, not quite the unicorn we're looking for. You know, in terms of apples to apples for what we're proposing, I have to say, the only thing I smelled was the grapes that were being processed. Nothing from the facility at all. But that is on our radar. The other thing, just for members of the public that are here. That they are having, we'll email this, but close Sina is having a community open house November fifth. Or the week of like the first of the fifth, so they're doing some virtual things and also having an open house. So, but the site visit is on our radar for certainly not later than November. And that'll be a public meeting too. So the board will go, anyone who wants to go, come with us. You know, we need to, right? Otherwise, our individuals will see what we can do. Yes, I think that's when they're open.
So we have some Murphy's.
Yeah, as of now, environmental health director.
Yes.
He heard is scheduled to be here at the October meeting. And the community, so the questions you have is where they mayor, the county mayor may not be. Cutted on updating the lamp, which is the program that the county uses to regulate. So if you want to hear from the county and the director will be here. Anything else for agenda? Not for me. Next regular meeting is October thirteenth. I guess we held this meeting, a special meeting, even though thirteenth is not that far away, just because of the critical path we're on. Try and get STAN TECH moving and get moving forward for the design. So thank you, Bob, for getting and thank you, Autumn, for. Regular meeting will be here the thirteenth. And with that, I'll enter the motion to adjourn at six fifty-six. I can see that all in favor, as we're in person. So on condition to the whole, all in favor. All right, thank you all for coming.
Good to meet you guys. My name?